May twenty below zero wind chill today.
That's gonna get to twenty.
Glad everybody's here. Mr. Manager, you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Let's do it.
We have four items this morning. We'll, and it runs the gamut. We have some public safety. We have some election office information, and then we'll round it out with the appraiser's office and their online appeal. Well, Laura will start us off. I wanted her to come in and just give an update. First of all, we had some really crazy weather over the weekend, so she can give an update on this nine one one calls in general over the cold weekend. And then talk about some operational things she's doing in nine one one. And then we have a call that we want to step through with you. And so she's here to cover all that. We'll have her start us up. So Laura, make sure your mic is on too.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys? Laura Forshi, you're Director of Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. The manager queued me up so nicely to talk about this weekend, but this weekend thankfully was very anticlimactic at nine one one. So we were very thankful that people seemed to hunker down and stay in and out of the cold weather. And we, our call volume stayed pretty, even keel around a thousand calls a day. And we are continuing to meet that benchmark, meet or exceed that benchmark of ninety percent of calls answered within fifteen seconds. I know there was one day over the weekend where we had, I believe, ninety eight percent of calls answered within fifteen seconds. So we're really thankful for our staff that is just working so diligently to meet that benchmark. And we understand how that feels to the public to know that when they're calling, you know, that line is getting picked up right away. Uh, we did have a couple of structure fires over the weekend. That's what we tend to worry about most when we have this cold weather. People running space heaters. I know Cedric County Fire Department worked with communications to put out a nice information brief on safety with space heaters. So we were thankful to see that come out because we know that becomes problematic. So really, the weekend went rather smoothly. To update you on some things that we are doing over at Emergency Communications, it is, we have really pivoted from uh, the last couple of years as we've been focused in just kind of really staffing operations and meeting that really baseline need of people calling nine one one. Now that our staffing levels are really remaining around ninety percent, which is a great benchmark to be at. We of course want it at a hundred percent or above, but we are really staying steady around ninety percent. So now we're pivoting out of that really operational focus that remains, but we get to move into some more support focused activities. So we have some opportunities with our agency partners to really increase what we're doing with them and to make sure that we are incorporating their needs into what we do. Obviously, the elephant in the room is the fire department, right? So our fire agencies have expressed some concerns on operations. So uh, we want to be really responsive to that. Uh, to be responsive to that, we need communication and thankfully that communication is happening. We get a weekly report from Wichita Fire Department that is emailed over that lists um, calls that they have submitted from the field that they have questions on, um, felt like there were errors on, um, you know, some of them have to do with operational as in the dispatcher doing X, Y, and Z. Some of them are CAD recommendations where they feel like the truck that was recommended for the response was inaccurate. And so it runs the gamut of what the uh, concerns are. Um, this is, we are in our, we've had two weeks now. Our third week's report just came yesterday. So we were, uh, so this is a new process. And we respond to them within, we try within two days, um, and have made it within two days. But Elena Moreno, our Deputy Director gets in and pulls ABL reports to figure out where trucks are. We pull radio traffic, everything to make sure we're really comprehensive in what we are looking at and how we guide our staff. But then also provide some feedback to the Wichita Fire Department. You know, there's been absolutely some identified opportunities for our staff to understand better how they can serve that department and those uh, team members out in the field, and then some opportunities to provide feedback back to the fire department of this wasn't wrong and let us show you what's happening on our end, or this doesn't seem wrong from our viewpoint. Um, let us gather more information on that. So we're hoping that that communication back and forth improves that relationship and ultimately improves the service we provide for the community. That's our, that is our goal really in what we're doing and we can't lose sight of that. On top of that, we have um, Elena Moreno, again, our Deputy Director who's over operations is meeting weekly with a, one of the firefighters from the Fire Marshal's Office with the Wichita Fire Department. So they are meeting in person weekly to discuss um, different concerns, opportunities. And we also have a fire subcommittee that is born out of our nine one one advisory board. And that includes the Fire Chief from Cedric County Fire Department, Wichita Fire Department, Derby Fire Department, and then a chief that, or not a chief, I'm sorry, a firefighter that represents the suburban fire departments. And we are uh, meeting for the first time on February seventh. So that is on the books to meet and discuss that. Or discuss whatever they'd like to discuss. And there was one other, oh, uh, the subcommittees for law enforcement. There was a discussion at the advisory board about having subcommittees for all disciplines. So police, fire, EMS. Uh, law enforcement felt very comfortable with the current process that if they have a concern, they reach out to me, we address it and move on. So they are not going to have any sort of official subcommittee meeting. And then with EMS, again, I think they felt very confident with the uh, mechanism in place. And they are, while we've had more of a loose conversation with them, that is going to be more structured moving forward. I believe they're doing, I don't know if it's monthly meetings, um, it's happening again between their Deputy Director and our Deputy Director. So we have a lot of conversations going. Had a lot of conversations going. So this isn't new that we have been open to this feedback, but certainly want to make sure that's being relayed appropriately and accurately. Um, because accuracy is important. And so that is what's happening with that. Any questions on those efforts? I could talk about, we've got a group, we've got ten new employees starting before the end of the month. We continue with our hiring efforts. Got a lot of training efforts going on, but before we get into this um, call of um, this call that's getting some um, questions asked on it. Do you have any questions about what I've talked about?
Very good. Questions, Commissioner Mice?
Just a quick one. Thanks. That's a great update. proactive steps you've taken. So that, just a quick question is the meeting uh, that you have uh, weekly with Wichita Fire Department?
That's correct. Yeah, it's between um, our Deputy Director and one of their Fire Marshals, correct?
Okay, so it's you guys and the Fire Marshal or?
In Wichita Fire Department specifically, uh huh. Yes.
Commissioner Dass.
I think, Commissioner. Well, Laura, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Uh, the main thing I want to pass on, and please pass, tell your staff how much we appreciate that. But uh, they are a valuable, valuable portion of Sedgwick County. We thank them. We've done a lot from this commission to make sure that we can support them and your mission. You know, we renovated your facility, we purchased some additional land out back so we can fence it off, so it makes it safer for your staff. But we put in a new computerated dispatch system. We've added staffing, so you're getting up to the point where we feel a little more comfortable. Uh, so we'll continue to support you because we believe in what you're doing and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Just one thing I would say to that, so much growth over the last year. When I think about twenty twenty three and the journey we've been on, and it's growth that's really been supported from the commission. Growth sometimes doesn't look the prettiest. And so um, it was a year of great just things that I never thought I would see come to fruition that have come to fruition last year, but it definitely, uh, we have some cleanup from that to do, which is what our focus is on this year is kind of getting some of that tied together nicely.
Very good. Other questions or comments?
Thank you. I have a question. Um, I know you said that the sheriff and EMS are comfortable and you guys are kind of working through that, but you're getting a weekly report from Wichita Fire. What about the Cedric County Fire?
Cedric County Fire Department, we liaison with them. We've always liaised on with our Wichita Fire and Cedric County Fire Departments, most specifically. And the Derby Fire Department and our suburban fire departments have really reached out as they've had issues. Uh, but that conversation with the Cedric County Fire Department continues. It is just not as structured or as frequent in their meetings as Wichita Fire. Um, but we've got a couple of personnel within Cedric County Fire Department we need, but there's actually one coming in to observe to make sure that they understand what's happening at the console, which I'm so thankful that they're open to that. And yes.
Okay, okay. Well, I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Dennis said. You guys do just amazing work. So we appreciate you so much and, and you and your staff, everybody. I don't know what this community would do without the work that you provide to us. So just hope that you know that we see you, we value you and
Thank you.
All the noise, just
We have a good team over there. We'll get through it. So appreciate you.
Commissioner Hatt.
Thank you, Chairman. Just uh, do you plan on covering some of the details of one or two of those calls still?
I have the call, it's specifically at forty five sixty South Hydraulic I want to go through with you.
Okay, so you're gonna do that right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we didn't miss our chance.
No, absolutely not. No. Before we pivot into that conversation, I just wanted to answer any questions.
Very good. A couple of questions on my end. How many calls? I, first, let me just say this weekly report, we are going over the weekly report. I don't want to call it a complaint log. I, I don't, what do you, what do you call it?
I call it a weekly report.
A weekly report. I think that's
Yes.
The weekly, I think that's wonderful. You know, when we had a discussion from the B O C C level about hiring a third party to give us a report on the Brook Hall apartment incident. One of the promises that were made from the bench was we're going to continue to make progress. We're not going to wait until this thing, you know, we're, and this is an example of continual progress. We're not waiting to see what recommendations or that's an example of that. So I appreciate this. I think this is going to be really, really helpful. And it sounds like it already has been in just three weeks. How many calls a day? You say eleven hundred calls a day. How many of those calls are fire calls?
I don't have that, um, I don't have that number readily available. I know that I pulled numbers looking at a six month period of uh, structure fires. I know we were looking at last week's report. I think we had four errors that were sent over and it accounted for zero, what was it? Zero point zero three percent of the calls that we take for the fire department where they identified errors? And that's part of what we are looking at. Not in a dismissive way, like these aren't important, but we really want to look at the scope of yes, this feedback is great, but we also need to, for our team, celebrate the things that we do well because we can't just look at the errors. You know, it's, it's a balance of here are your opportunities for things to do differently and here are the things that we did really well.
I think that was the ratio I was getting at is how many of the, of the weekly report, how many of those are, is the fire department seeing an issue with? And alerting out of the ratio of how many calls? And if, you said it's zero point zero three percent of the calls that you took in dispatch for fire, they alerted that there would be issues. So
That was on last week's report specifically, yes.
Okay, well, sounds like the vast majority, the super majority of your calls are highly successful and to protocol. So I think that's helpful to note. Why don't we go ahead and move forward? I, I'm going to ask you at the end what we need to do to continue to support your department and your personnel and where we want to head. So just keep that in the back of your mind where we're heading, but
Absolutely.
Why don't you go ahead and walk us through this call?
Yes. And I'm so sorry. Yes, please. So this is, the timeline I'm putting in front of you is, it's a really rough timeline as in it's not dressed up in the way that it's formatted, but it's an accurate timeline. And uh, Tom had asked me to make a copy for you when I got here, so I apologize for the presentation of it. So we had a call um, at forty five sixty South Hydraulic and this call came in on January seventh um, at seven eleven in the morning. And this has, we looked at this call, we're getting a report, first of all, from every, every structure fire that we have, any structure fire that we have. The supervisor on duty, on duty is providing a report to myself and Deputy Director Moreno on how, how it's gone. And so we were aware of this call the morning that it occurred and the anomalies that happened with it. So the original call came in at seven eleven fourteen. It was a, an abandoned cell phone. The call rang for three seconds. We had six seconds of an open line. You could hear somebody say something, um, and then she disconnected, or she said hello and then disconnected. And created a cat event off of that, just abandoned cell phone call. And then we're calling back as we do with every cell phone call that comes in, that's abandoned. And she answers after seven seconds. It's an elderly female on the line and she's very hard to understand on the call. And listening back to it after the fact, um, and through the lens of knowing how it ended up, you can hear her say that my house is on fire. Help me. Forty five sixty is what she provides. We've had, even listening to it after the fact, it's hard to hear it unless you know what you're listening to. And we can provide the reporting um, to you so you can hear that. But they are asking her, the call takers asking her, what's going on? And because they did not, they could not understand her when she said that. And at seven eleven forty six, we had the address of forty five sixty South Hydraulic. And we're trying to verify that. We got that address from some call history. And, and so we are, uh, we're looking to try to figure out what, where this person is because it's obvious that they need help. So we got the address, um, I'm sorry, we got it seven eleven forty six. We changed it seven twelve fifty one. We were trying to get the lot number and to verify the address with her during that time. The initial coding of the call was a known call for EMS. That is a call type that sends police, fire, and EMS from the onset. Uh, the belief in the room was that this was a medical emergency. Again, um, she kept saying help. You could hear the TV in the background. And there was no signs of, um, there was no coughing, there's no um, anything that would make you think that it was full of smoke in the house or anything like that. She just kept saying help. And her address, she kept saying forty five sixty, and then finally provided that full address at one point. So anyway, they coded as a unknown call for EMS, EMS and fire are dispatched shortly after that. Law enforcement, um, took a little bit longer to get them started, uh, but they weren't as critical once we figured out what the incident was. Uh, Squad nineteen responded for the Wichita Fire Department. And so they were en route within a minute after dispatch. And then we were able to get that it was lot number three ten. We got that through, looking through some call history because she was not able to provide the lot number. EMS is in the area initially, and they're kind of standing back because we don't know what's going on on these unknown calls. They tend to wait for law enforcement to clear the scene because we don't know if, we don't know what we're walking into. And so they're hanging back a little bit. Fire pulls up at seven nineteen twenty nine, Squad nineteen's there. And in the course of this, there's discussion in the room because she says, uh, on the call, she's making several comments about, um, she says, I'm on fire. And I was talking to the call taker and she says, we thought she was either like having, um, like a temperature or, um, what is it? Where, um, like a skin issue, you know, it, again, she's not coughing, you don't hear any fire. She said, we really were just, we believed it to be a medical issue. Uh, and they're asking, are, is something on fire? Is your house on fire? Ma'am, tell us what's going on. And she is just not, she's obviously not able to focus in on, on really articulating that. Understandable. And of course, we've got everybody going from the onset anyway. And so Squad nineteen gets on scene at seven nineteen twenty nine. They say that the house is on fire. It's quickly bounced to a house fire. And by seven twenty one oh six, the fire department, it sounds like she's on, because we still have an open line as we're trying to figure out. Once we have it confirmed that it's a house fire, we're trying to figure out where in the house is she? We're asking, are you in your bedroom? Are you on the floor? She says, I can't move. So why can't you move? Have you fallen? Are you, you know, where in your house are you? We've got units there. And again, she's unresponsive to that. And so it sounds like the fire department's with her at seven twenty one oh six from the phone call. And it makes more sense, um, that that would be accurate because by seven twenty two fifty one, fire says that they've got her out on the porch and they're asking for EMS to move in. And EMS makes contact with the patient at seven twenty four nineteen. It's a code red patient uh, that then is transported and at the hospital by seven forty eight. So what the trick of this is, or what the, um, what's being discussed is again, really easy after the fact, under the lens of what you know occurred to think about what was happening on that phone call. And so knowing at the end that it was a structure fire, then you know, the things she is saying start to make sense under that light. And I talked about this a little bit earlier about our call volume. Looking at calls from July first to December thirty first of last year, and only nine one one calls. We're not talking about any ten digit emergency or administrative. We had two hundred and nineteen, almost two hundred and twenty thousand calls for service. Of those, five hundred and twelve were structured fires, not, that doesn't even count how many of them were valid structured fires. So we're looking at a zero point two percent rate of structured fire calls within there. So when we are going in as a dispatcher and we're getting calls and we don't know, this is why we have unknown call types, because there's times we know somebody needs help, but I don't know what they need help with. Like I can't get a firm answer on what they need help with. Our mind does not initially jump to a structured fire. And, you know, it just doesn't go there initially. Again, after the fact, knowing what's happened, it makes sense is she was not literally on fire thankfully, but she was obviously in a very heated condition. And during the call, they read that as a medical complaint. And we talked a lot within our team of, when do you default and just send the full response? Just send, send the cavalry, send them all. And there's a tricky balance in there of making sure if you oversend, you run into issues with resource depletion. And then you also run into issues with, if I've got a fire truck running hot, EMS, you know, police, whatever, running red light and siren to something. Um, and they plow into somebody and, you know, cause an accident with injuries or worse. Have we, did we have the groundwork there to, for the response that was sent? Do we have the reason um, logically to have sent that response? And so that's the balance that we have in dispatch of trying to assess what's going on, trying to figure out who to send. And sometimes it's really crystal clear and sometimes it's just not. And so you go with the best information you have. And, and again, on this one, there was, you know, confidence that we had sent everybody from the start. There was some discussion also in talking with my team about changing it to unknown call for fire, which then sends two squads, but we had another squad that had already jumped the call. And so Squad eleven and Squad nineteen responded to the call. So again, my dispatcher says I didn't add another squad because another squad was already there. So changing it to that unknown call for fire, even thinking through something being on fire, but not being sure what it was, it wasn't going to change the response. And we did not know it was a structured fire. I think that was, Irene, do you have any questions on that?
Very good, very good analysis here. We appreciate the step through. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Hatt.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of uh, follow up questions. When you said the word difficult to hear, you mean difficult to understand?
Difficult to understand, yes.
Okay, but in terms of the, the audio level, that wasn't the problem?
No, the audio level, it sounds at one point like she may have put her phone down. And but no, it's not. I don't think there's an audio level issue. Um, again, I think it makes more sense when you've heard the recording. She just has a very kind of weak, um, what's the word? That trembly voice and it's just hard, unintelligible.
And just trying to make sure we insert the, the uh, adjectives where needed. So I want to make sure that it says it was disconnected, the caller disconnected.
The caller disconnected, yes.
And when we called back, EMS called them back. EMS contacted her back. They were the ones initiating the second phone call.
Nine one one called her back, correct? Yes.
I'm trying EMS, I'm it.
That's okay, no.
Communications, I said the wrong thing.
Absolutely.
So yeah, um, so nine one one called her back. That's right. So, um, and then that, that says, where it says, address changed in call. Can you please explain that again?
Yes. And again, I'm sorry, these were my rough notes. Uh, I should have made better notes for you anticipating that you would want those in front of you. So when we, she provides that forty five sixty and then we get hydraulic out of her. And we're trying to verify that we have the correct location because again, we're going off of this cell phone call and they're trying to map it. They're doing, you know, they're going in looking at call history. And so, um, after she's not responding to that verification of the address, they went ahead and changed it to forty five sixty South Hydraulic so that we had a dispatchable location to start units that way. We weren't going to wait any longer to try to get her to um, communicate that back in a way that was verified.
So was this a landline or a cell phone?
Cell phone.
And do you have the GPS support to know from the cell phone approximately where this call is coming from?
We had, um, yes, let me see. So we had X Y coordinates, um, and it was over off of uh, K fifteen and I thirty five originally. Let me see if I can see where, um, and I'd have to get you the exact address over there, but it was in that area, but it was not, we did not have a type ping on that address or that lot initially. And so again, that's where we're calling, we're going through call history. We had another team member calling over to Spider to see if PD had any history with this lady, um, and her address with that phone number. And so we're using all the tools we have available to narrow that down.
Was Squad nine, excuse me, was Squad nineteen at their, at their station when they were dispatched?
Yes, they were.
And, uh, well, they dispatched a license hiren?
They were, yes.
Okay. All right.
The initial dispatch was Engine nineteen. Squad nineteen ended up taking the call. There wasn't a delay caused by that, that just if you uh, look at the call record, it was initially Engine nineteen that was sent and Squad nineteen took it.
I see that you dispatched EMS and fire near, you know, almost the same time, but there was a small delay between the two. Um, knowing that fire is uh, certified, you know, is EMT at least. Um, you can do airway breathing, um, and CPR and, and um, blood treatment, if you will, uh, that, um, blood trauma, if you will. Um, curiously, is it normal to dispatch EMS first versus fire since, again, if you think it's a medical call, why not just dispatch fire first? I'm just curious.
It's really, we want it to happen as closely together as possible. So as the call, you've got two different dispatchers, of course, when working the resource channel, one working EMS. So as that call pulls together, you've got your address and your call type that is, we're looking forward to, okay. I know now this is for fire. This is where I'm going. So I know what station to pull from. Um, and so the goal, within a minute, it needs to be dispatched, but as quickly as possible. So
So there was no intent to
There's no, yeah, there's no nuance on who gets sent.
It's just how long it took to get them.
Absolutely.
Very good. Um, and again, they did not have to enter the structure. She was on the front porch when they got there?
No, they did enter the structure. They got her out to the front porch for EMS, but they did enter the structure. I'm not sure where in the house she was located. And but that seven twenty one oh six benchmark, you can hear them on the phone as we still, we maintain that open line the whole time we have with her. Um, and so yes, they did enter the structure.
And do they, do they have a um, response time threshold that they're trying to hit? I mean, it looks like from the beginning to the end here, um, when they had the victim in their, in their, uh, in their hands, so to speak, it was about, uh, about eleven minutes. Is that, is that reasonable?
I, I cannot speak to fire. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know what their response time threshold is.
I guess, um, so EM, EM, sorry, fire showed up. What time did fire get there?
They were on scene at seven nineteen twenty nine.
Okay, I see it's on scene there. Okay.
So they had, by the time they were dispatched on scene, a little less than six minute response time.
What's the word balanced mean on that phrase?
So it means that it's um, transferred over to a larger response. So if they get on scene, say a system alarm, a fire alarm. If we were had to have a fire alarm here at the refined building and the fire crew gets on scene and sees, yes, this is a valid fire alarm, they would ask us to balance the call to a high rise in this situation. And that to us means, hey, this is changing to a different response. Send the rest of the crews that you need for this response.
And at what point in this list did you dispatch more fire uh, resources?
So they were there at seven nineteen twenty nine asking for additional fire resources and they were sent, um, within sixteen seconds, I believe.
Is that, is that on this list here?
It is not. I apologize. Uh, so seven nineteen forty seven is when the additional response was sent. And so doing my math quickly on that, um,
That was because the Squad nineteen, Squad nineteen's would have come for it?
Yes, correct. So yes, eighteen seconds later, the additional response was sent. And again, we had two crews on scene, Squad nineteen and Squad eleven on that initial.
Is there anything, anything about this call that's a negative uh, thing? You, you're talking about opportunities. Is there anything about this call was negative in any way?
We, as we talked about this with our team, um, yes, not negatives, different things I would like them to be aware of. And on the dis, on the call taker's side, I felt comfortable with what happened. I, you know, it's, um, we want to hear everything. Goodness, we want to hear and understand everything that is said on the phone and it's just not realistic to do so. And so we talked about the decision making and that. I, I understand the decision that was made and I, I get it. Uh, on the fire side, I wish we would have been a little more communicative to the fire units responding about what we were hearing on the phone. And we talked through that with the dispatcher and there was a lot of discussion in the room when this was going on about should we balance this to this house fire? Should we just start the full response? And um, I asked him, I told him in the future what I would do with twenty years of experience is to provide the information to the squad responding. This is what we're hearing. Do you want to continue to check it out or do you want me to go ahead and start the structured fire response? We can lean into our expertise, allow them to lean into theirs as well. And that's where uh, this partnership between agencies is so important. The relationship between agencies is very critical where dispatchers should feel comfortable to ask these questions and not feel that they're going to be berated, um, in doing so. And that's what I would have preferred to have happened.
Very good, okay. My, I guess my final question would be this. It says in the narrative. My guess, my final question would be this, it says in the narrative, it says caller says, my house is on fire. Help me forty five sixty.
That's my notation in there as I'm listening to the call after the fact. And this is what again, the point of contention is in some of the dialogue out there. Under the lens of understanding where this ended up and listening to it again, I had to listen to it twice to get that out of there. Um, but yes, that is what she says, the initial, and that's, um, she makes another couple of comments. And there, uh, two minutes and eight seconds in, she says something about a fire. I can't even tell. I'm listening to it, you know, multiple times on playback, what she says. She says, I'm on fire two other times, but that is the only time in the beginning of that where she says, my house is on fire. Um, and again, it's right. It's very, uh, scratchy. Not because of the reporting or who the phone, it just, her voice is very weak in that moment.
Once the dispatcher decides he's going to dispatch, uh, fire resources, how long does that take for them to, once the decisions are made, how long until that dispatch actually happens?
So there's a minute, a minute timeframe that that needs to happen. And though we usually look for about twenty to thirty seconds. So what we're doing in that time, I've got the call in front of me. I see, okay, this is a house fire or a known EMS at forty five sixty south hydro. I'm pulling up my recommendations, uh, window, of course, this one recommended station nineteen. Um, sticking with that unknown EMS call squad nineteen. Does that make sense for what I've got there? Absolutely. Cause I know station nineteen is not far from there. So I'm just making sure, I'd rather know from the beginning, I'm sending the right unit than to send the wrong unit and have there be a delay from the beginning. So I'm cross checking things. Um, and that's what's happening in that timeframe before I send somebody, I dispatched them kind of waiting on their lights and tones, just go off at the station to open up those speakers and then I'm voicing that dispatch.
So it looks to me like between those, between that comment and the actual dispatch was two minutes and seven seconds. And so had they made a decision immediately that she said the word fire and I heard it? And they would dispatch fire and maybe shave about a minute off this or so, maybe a minute, maybe go more than a minute, but um, thankfully, as it turned out, uh, this one turned out fine, but again, I want to say again, thank you for, you know, we always learn, there's ways to learn. Uh, I come from a, uh, I'll just share, I come from a aircraft world and I listen to, uh, ATC talk to airplane pilots and I, I get, I lose the cadence, if you will. And once you lose cadence, you don't understand what's being said. It sounds like a different language. If you, if you stay with them and you're, and you hear, understand the first word, then you can, might understand the second word, the third word. But once you misunderstand one word, the whole thing falls apart pretty quickly. And that's just my experience. And so, um, when someone's trying to, trying to communicate and there's anything that causes that to, to essentially lose cadence between those words. It's very easily, uh, uh, very easy to misunderstand what's being said. And I think that hindsight's always twenty twenty. We can always listen to this and and we're focused on one thing. It's easier to hear it. But when you're doing a lot of other things, trying to manage resources and, and you know, you're doing, you're busy. Not just listening, but you're also doing other things. I think that we expect an awful lot. I just want to say thank you for, uh, sharing this with us and I appreciate the good explanation. Thanks.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. You had mentioned maybe what you would have done differently and, and explained why it's so critical that there's relationships between the different partners. Um, and you said that if they were comfortable, you know, that's, they need to be comfortable being able to do that. So my question is, is your staff comfortable doing that? Or do they feel if they say something and it's wrong at all, that people, they'll be treated poorly? And then maybe that's why they're not doing what you think could have been helpful.
It is, um, what a resilient team I have and what a strong team I have. But they're worn down and, um, they're seeing what's happening to me in the press. And it is making them gun shy. They have also experienced, if not outright, um, if not outright rudeness and definitely tones and, um, belittling, um, just feeling very belittled in that spot when they don't make what's deemed is the right decision. And we are really coaching through that hardcore right now. Like it is okay to put yourself out there and, and we're talking a lot about how we serve our mission outside of that. And our mission isn't about our egos. And it is okay if we get our feelings hurt. We can deal with that. You know, let me, let Elena deal with that in the conversations that we have. And really, and it's not a egoic as in we can't be wrong. Um, but it's a lot of, um, I'm trying to explain, I'm, I can remember being a very new dispatcher and just having that biting tone come back on the radio and just feeling my face get red and like, oh my, like, it just, it's learning's vulnerable. Um, and then, you know, adding on to that is that feeling that you've just made a fool out of yourself. And, um, but we're, we're talking about again, our mission is just so huge. And that person that's out there, they don't care if your feelings got hurt because they need help. And they need help really quickly and the right help. And our team really serves that mission and they believe in it. And so that's how we're moving past that.
Well, and I asked that because I had heard comments from some of their dispatchers about just how they're treated from time to time. And so as we're working with that, um, fire, what did you say it was subcommittee that you're forming? Is that going to be a part of that? Are we going to address? I mean, I know we're going to address fires concerns, but are we going to also be able to address?
Yes.
Nine one one's concerns at that same juncture.
Absolutely. So that conversation has already started. Um, as I mentioned, um, Deputy Director Moreno's meeting with one of the, um, people from the Wichita Fire Department's, um, Fire Marshal's Office. He has been really open in that conversation about wanting to improve that relationship. And I appreciate, I, I would be remiss not to say Wichita Fire has also stepped up their efforts of communication. And I'm thankful for what they're doing to help improve this. And so they've got a great liaison assigned to that. Um, and yes, those conversations are happening and they have been open to hearing that.
Okay. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate that feedback. And my last question is, uh, you know, nine one one is the conduit to our community for public safety, the front lines. Um, what you do is incredibly important and we have to elevate to make sure that your staff understands that they are public safety and they are incredibly important. We're going to have so a lot of conversations in the budget cycle about what nine one one needs. I anticipate and we're actually, I can speak for myself, but I think I speak for my colleagues too, that we're eager to have those conversations. Um, I think they're important conversations. You and I have talked about where you want to take this thing between call patch, call takers and dispatchers separate, the use of AI in your field, um, some of the things that need to happen in these regards. Is there anything that you need right now, uh, to make sure that your staff knows that they are supported? Um, and that you have the resources that you need to make sure to do your job well, so that the people in this community have confidence in what's happening. Do you, we're going to have a lot of conversations starting February, but do you need anything right now that we can do for you?
I think the vocal support from the commission has been felt and our staff is noticing that. And so I think that has been, I appreciate you not sitting silent and just letting this happen to staff that are really under your guard. I mean, they're, they're my team that I watch out for, but they're ultimately the county's team. And so I appreciate you guys being really mindful of that and responsive to that. So can just continuing that. And then compensation is always important. We've been so, we've been left so far behind with our public safety peers that it, I believe has created a culture where dispatch is not recognized as an equal partner at the table. And so as we're combating that culture, I think compensation is a large piece of that compensation training. Um, there's a lot that goes into that resources, technology. But I think we've got some really big plans with some of those conversations and easier one to fix quickly. Um, and so just keeping that in mind as those compensation discussions happen in the near future, I would appreciate that.
Your comments are noted and I think that what you have laid out in the vision of where you want to take this is also noted. Uh, and I think that'll start to play itself out, starting February, where we're going to strategically take your department over the next year, uh, three years, five years and beyond. So we appreciate your leadership and appreciate how you're navigating some of these conversations. And this here, the weekly logs, I think are helpful. When you said that you want to lean into the expertise of those that are on the, that, that was profound. So, um, there's any other questions or comments or? Thank you for being here this morning. Appreciate you.
I appreciate your opportunity.
Manager, next item.
All right. Well, I, Chief Lanning, I think we'll, we'll pass on that. I've had EMS chief here, he, they also made the scene, but I think we'll, we'll move on past this. Let's talk about damn jam review, um, emergency manager.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Emergency Management Director. We are going to go over the damn jam twenty twenty three after action. Um, you guys have seen the after action report. Um, I'm just going to kind of paint the picture of the entire event. In lieu of anticipating twenty twenty four. Um, so the Lake Afton, uh, damn jam music festival, um, was held at Lake Afton, July twenty first and twenty second of last year. Um, we actually had a very fortunate weather climate, uh, in this timeframe. The temperatures are in the low eighties, which is very unheard of in the end of July. Um, so our heat stress, uh, risk, we're going to go into a risk assessment here in a moment, but we actually had a kind of a pleasant weather event that usually isn't happening in July twenties. So, um, go ahead, next slide, please, Nicole. Oh, I have a clicker. Okay. Thank you. So the damn jam, I just want to clarify what the damn jam music festival was. Um, this is a timeline of events, uh, Sunday, July sixteenth, they started setting up campers. This is just kind of a timeline. Uh, on Friday, they actually had several events scheduled. The paddle boat, um, activities, of course, was canceled because of the blue green algae, um, on the lake. But they did also have a flag ceremony with the nation of patriots, um, nice little ceremony, uh, honoring a couple of veterans. Commissioner Howell was there, um, to, to participate in that. Um, and then they also had multiple bands scheduled. You can see the timeframe, the schedule that is their schedule. And then an after party, one AM to three AM and Saturday was a very similar, um, sequence of events, except for without the flag ceremony, but they did have a car show and somewhat of a beach party and campers parade. So this was an activity, wasn't just a bunch of concerts. They had a lot of activities scheduled throughout the day as well. Uh, just to kind of go over what the planning process was, um, the application was filled out in August of twenty twenty two. We entered into the contract in October. Um, we had learned about this damn jam event. This was an event that used to be held in Butler County, El Dorado State Park. So once we kind of started hearing about this coming to, um, Lake Afton, we contacted, or I contacted the emergency manager over there in Butler County and got some after action reports and started learning more and more about what this event was, what kind of risks that we needed to plan for, what was their experience with this type of an event? Um, in February twenty twenty three, we had our first public safety meeting at the E O C. And this is where we reviewed the contract and learned that they were expecting ten thousand employees. So you can imagine at that moment, we were kind of, uh, raising eyebrows going, oh my gosh, how, how, what are we doing? Um, so we met with fire EMS sheriff, Lake Afton representative, myself, of course, and the CEO of a production company LLC. And then we discussed that, what resources did we need? Because as we know, Lake Afton is kind of in an isolated part. It's MacArthur is a two lane road. So with ten thousand people, we started asking a lot of questions. Um, the CEO of a production company was very accommodating. She gave us the information we need. She attended the meeting with us. Um, and from there we had, um, we decided that we needed to prestage some resources out there because we didn't want to have a risk of something going wrong and having to have a response time through nine one one. So we had, um, kind of piggybacked off of what Butler County had done. The South Central Region Homeland Security Council has an incident command trailer that's at our disposal. So we decided to go ahead and, and use that, check that out for our use, same thing that Butler County did when it was in El Dorado. And then we attended damn jam operations meetings scheduled invited by the A production company at their headquarters. And we want a meeting monthly and then initially as the event drew closer, we met weekly. And it was an opportunity for us to hear their planning, ask any questions, um, about public safety as we went along. So we were able to develop an incident action plan, common public safety objectives between all entities. So we had months to plan for this and we came up with the fast effective identification, mitigation of threats to life, safety and health, provide rapid and effective response for issues that cannot be prevented. And together, all the agencies, public safety agencies, we agreed upon this after action plan, the sign roles and responsibilities, and started making some, um, uh, things document, documented. Part of that is a risk assessment, uh, with the, and with the safety plan. So we identified traffic was going to be a concern again, because of MacArthur being a one way. Um, we did have some, um, unpaved roads near the park that were potential ingress and egress. Uh, but we had some concerns, of course, fire, the weather, you know, when we started planning this, we were anticipating July weather, where it's ninety to a hundred degrees, very humid, you know, heat stress was a concern. Uh, we knew we were going to have UTVs out there, so safety for our personnel, personnel, personal safety and accountability. A communications plan was part of it. We had a medical plan and we had a security plan. Um, again, the risk assessment was we, you know, ten thousand people by a body of water in the middle of July, where we knew there was going to be alcohol, um, we had a lot of concerns with that many people. Some of the challenges were in the planning process is we were again anticipating ten thousand people, but as the event drew closer, ticket sales were reflecting a much smaller amount. Uh, we were initially told about two weeks prior, they were still rooting for five thousand. So then collectively, we were still meeting to decide, do we want to still prestage all these resources? You know, what's that threshold to prestage like water rescue, ambulance care and that kind of stuff? Um, the week of, we actually found out they were going to be around twenty five hundred people. And there's maybe a lot of factors into this. One, the blue green algae may have deterred some folks to, um, you know, camp out by the lake. And also we know some of the talent may not have been the talent that our local folks, um, really were wanting. Excuse me. Uh, so we collectively decided as a public safety team that we would still go ahead and prestage resources. And if the crowds didn't show up, this gave us an opportunity to at least train together and practice for a large event, uh, knowing that this could be an event that comes back year after year. So we did that. There was, um, one, uh, patient with a foot injury, one patient treated for last reach. So very minor, minor things, um, EMS can, can speak to, uh, if there's any questions on that. Sheriff reported only a couple of minor incidences. So we did not have very many problems. But again, much smaller crowd size than we anticipated. Water activities were canceled and the weather was actually very mild for this time of year. Um, areas for improvement that we talked about for future events. And again, even after this event, we all came together to talk about what went well and what went wrong or what areas of improvement. Um, we talked about a designated lost and found area. We did have a teenager that was lost. Um, and there was some communication challenges between the event security and sheriffs and the first responders of, at one point it was being told she was found, but then she wasn't found. She was with family, but the family said no. So that was something we could do better for next time. Uh, a lost and found area, a lot of folks had come into the incident command trailer because they found stuff. There was nowhere else for them to turn stuff in. So we wound up with some lost and found property. Um, having all the first response agencies work under unified command, um, EMS, fire, emergency management. We were in the command trailer, but sheriff, because they, they have normal operations at Lake Afton. They were kind of in their normal routine of, of, um, event management. Um, and then we're talking about, uh, policy for large events held at county owned property that include a risk assessment, public safety review. Um, there was some challenges with, uh, payment, uh, between, I know sheriff and the event coordinator, there was some challenges of getting staffing to, to staff this event. Uh, I won't speak on behalf of the sheriff, but I know there was a lot of challenges with that. And it was because of some things just weren't quite documented well enough to communicate what we had and didn't have. So again, overall summary, the crowd was much smaller than projected, very few incidences, but it did give us an excellent opportunity to do some joint training, um, on unified command, which is something we kind of struggle with, um, in the county. And this gave us an opportunity to, to practice that. Uh, the agencies paid for services as, as agreed upon. So, um, you know, we have a lot of stage, stage resources out there, but there were the, there was a history of this event not paying their bills and I, they paid their bills. So there's a lot of history and knowledge of, of how things used to be, um, in Butler County, but we did not experience that here in Cedric County. But again, we had a much different event, um, as well, different factors that contributed. We did have a storm creep up upon us. Actually, we were not supposed, we were not forecasted to have any storms and we actually had a severe storm coming towards us. Um, it served well that we had practiced again, that we were out there doing this. Uh, we wound up having to evacuate everyone to their vehicles. There was lightning approaching and there was some significant winds coming. So we were able to give them well in advance notice for them to get the tents down. We had no incidences, evacuation went well and we didn't have any damages. Uh, there was a very close lightning, um, some folks, oh, they're not in the room. Uh, yeah, my hair started standing up a little bit. So we, uh, we hunkered into cover real quick and sure enough, lightning was about a half mile away. Um, but anyway, that went very well. The event coordinators worked with us very well. We, we announced ahead of time, hey, this storm is north, it's coming towards us. And they have participated in our public safety plan. There was no hesitation, um, about the safety of the, of the attendees and also the vendors and the stage crew. Um, something, again, monthly, weekly meetings are beneficial, uh, meetings are happening now. I have not been to any meetings yet for twenty twenty four, but they do hold them on Wednesdays at their, um, they call it their headquarters. Um, and then the incident command trailer was beneficial as well. We had a temperature controlled, um, uh, I think it's thirty two foot long, maybe bigger of a command trailer that we were all able to work. We had radios and we had, uh, again, air conditioning, really didn't need it because it didn't get hot. Um, so that's the overall summary. It was actually very low key from what we were initially anticipating. Um, but again, every year is different. There was a lot of factors that may have contributed to it. Um, I won't go too much into twenty twenty four. I think Tim, you've been more engaged so far with the twenty twenty four, um, planning. Um, this is a part where we would start getting involved with, uh, coordinating public safety. This is a part where we would start getting involved with coordinating public safety resources. So stand for any questions with the 2023 After Action.
Wonderful recap. Appreciate that, Julie. Any questions or comments, Commissioner House?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of things. We did charge them for some of our presence there. What exactly, it wasn't just them using Lake Afton, but it was not camping fees. It was other things we charged the event for, like sheriff's officers. Is there a summary of that somehow?
I do, actually, in the, towards the end of the after-action report, there is a breakdown of the cost for sheriff and EMS. And those were paid. Yeah, EMS and sheriff's office were the ones who billed through contract with the A Production Company.
Tim, do you have any additional?
We had a flat fee of $25,000. Then we also had $2,135 in rental, camping rental share. And our store sales, when we looked at the weekend before and the weekend after, our store sales were up 77%, which is another almost $3,000 in store sales in that weekend. The arrangement with the sheriff was for off-duty officers. And so that's paid independent of the county. That's paid directly to the individual officers that do that work.
But we, we're the ones that determined how much sheriff's presence we needed at the event.
Correct.
So the, the, the cost of this was really non-negotiable for them. We, we chose how much to have there and made them pay for it.
That is correct.
And there was overtime as well.
It's off, it's not county-paid time. It's sacred.
Just looking backwards, I think there was a lot of debate about these costs. And that was a bit hard for them to, I, I don't, I don't know about what county does. I have no idea. But was this reasonably, do, do we think it was reasonably the same as what Butler County would provide?
Yes.
It was, and the costs were the same over there?
That I don't know. Emergency management, we don't get too much into the costs of, of that. So I really don't have those numbers of what Butler County charged.
So again, I think one of the reasons that this went from 10,000 to 2,500, if I understand correctly, was, was a lot of these costs had to be passed on. There was some late, very late decisions in what was required. And the agreements were signed late. Information got out late and just, just a lot of things that weren't ideal. I think it's great that we're doing this much earlier this year. That would help us a lot, but I would expect you're going to see your 10,000 this next time.
Yeah, just because I've been kind of monitoring their Facebook and their event, the, the talent that they're lining up. Well, they're much more known in the community than I think last year's were. So I definitely anticipate. And again, weather has a lot to do with it. You know, if, if it's going to be a comfortable weekend, people are going to want to camp. If it's not a comfortable weekend or if there's storms, that that's going to impact the event as well. And unfortunately, we don't really know that until maybe a week prior when we start getting. But this storm that popped up last week, that last year was completely a surprise. The weather service was even kind of surprised that it came down as far south as it did. So weather is a big factor in this kind of stuff.
Do we, do we think our, our charges were appropriate for the event? Do we look backwards and say, we charged the right amount or we charged too much? Or was there any, any post-event analysis?
I think that we're okay. As I said, we generated about $30,000 that went into the general fund. That seems appropriate, given the additional work that was required and that sort of thing. We have, one of the things that we've included in the negotiations, as we've discussed this, is we've got that camping fee. And so we share in the success of the project through the camping fee. As they have more guests come out and stay camp, we'll see increased revenue as well.
I just want to make sure we're not making this, you know, more difficult than it needs to be. But I also don't want to pass on costs for this to other taxpayers. I mean, there's a very thin line of balance between these two ideas.
If we could take, so Tim has covered what they paid the county. And I know the sheriff independently worked out his contract with them or his staff did. And there was even a time leading up to this that they actually had to elevate the fees for security because they just couldn't find deputies to work. And I forget what the numbers were. It was 50 an hour and then they had to go to 75 an hour just to get sheriff out there. Chief Lannerman is in the back too. And I know EMS also charged some fees. Now, in the sheriff's world, I don't think he's here, is he behind me? In the sheriff's world, I don't know that we send vehicles out with those staff or if they drive personal vehicles out. But I know that EMS, we had vehicles out. And Kevin, can you kind of come up and give us a summary of your charges? And whether you were made whole or not? Because this gets to the root of the matter of whether the taxpayer has to bear any burden for this. And I think that's what we're trying to get to with this discussion.
Kevin Meyer, Chief of EMS. Yes, we, we talked to the organizers beforehand based on what we thought the crowd attendance was going to be. And we staffed accordingly. I believe we had six personnel there on, on the first day and seven the second day, one of those being a reserve on the second day. That was agreed upon with the organizer beforehand. And given an estimate of the, of the cost of that, which they did pay on 31st of August. So we did also, that included, we had two of our ATVs out there. Like I said, along with those, those personnel, set up medical branch and, and working unified command. We had one supervisor and then, then the rest working in the different areas.
Commissioner Duss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Julie, thank you. Kevin, thank you. The information. Actually, I believe that the things that you identified for areas of improvement can help us any type of large event that might happen, not just this one. So as far as this event was concerned, I think that we were kind of blessed in a lot of ways. Because the weather was not that bad. We did have a storm in the middle of it. We were able to keep people out of Lake Afton because of blue-green algae over. When I went out there, I saw people in there, but so we didn't have rescues to worry about. So you were able to develop and make some plans to the future, no matter what the event is. How these things about lost and found and lost persons and putting everything under unified command. I think those are all good learning things. I think it could have been a lot worse if it would have been hot, if people would have been in the lake. But you would have had 10,000 people there. I went out personally and saw the, the operation one day. And we had an awful lot of resources and staff out there. As Kevin mentioned, we had a couple of gators out there. We had an ambulance out there. We had a boat out there. We had fire out there. We had a big camper that you were using for a, a command post. There was an awful lot of resources being dedicated to this event. And I don't know if we'd have had 10,000 people out there and we'd have had 100-degree temperatures. But even all the casts that I saw out there, it's going to be enough because of the emergencies that could have arisen. Even what I, I did see out there, we could have had more damage to Lake Afton, our facilities and so forth than we had, which would have cost us an awful lot to recover from in the future. With the size that we had, maybe the fees were appropriate. If we'd had 10,000 people out there, I don't think the fees were even close to appropriate of what we would have had. I spoke about this soon as I came back after that weekend and talked about all of the resources that we had dedicated out there. And I was very impressed with Sedgwick County. I was impressed with our emergency management, with EMS, with fire, with sheriff, everyone that was involved. You all did a great job. I just don't know if it's worth it for this county to worry about it again this year. When I came away from it, I said, I will never do it again. In my district, I think it's a bad idea. If it grows like that they're hoping it will grow, I, I would not want it in my district. I think it's a mistake to look at the future of this in Sedgwick County. It left Butler County for a reason. There were issues that happened in Butler County and they very well could have happened in Sedgwick County if we'd have had 10,000 drunk people out there trying to stay alive in, in heat and in a lake. I think it's a mistake if we even consider it for 2024. I will not vote for it. I will not support it in any way whatsoever. I appreciate truly our staff and what they did and how that they kept this thing together. I do not want to put the stress on our staff and on our facilities for the future. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Can you, Andrew Stoles, are we, what does the contract situation look like here? Is this, are we under contract for '24? This is six months, seven months away?
We have a draft contract. We've been discussing this since the, since prior to the event. They're interested in coming back. We were waiting for this after-action report to be able to finalize that before. If, if there's agreement, we would bring it to the commission for approval, like other contracts.
We had a, we had a Zoom meeting a week or two ago with all the, with sheriff, fire chief, Julie, EMS, Rusty. And I, I think that there, I, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I think the staff, the chiefs of the staff, and Julie can correct me. She can speak for herself and Kevin's here, he can speak for himself too. But I think the theme of that meeting was they had concerns similar to what Mr. Dennis just raised, that the potential of this. And what has historically happened, this is not a group that is, they have a history. They have a history in the state, they have a history in Butler County. And the fear was, as we've discussed this back and forth, that if we had a situation after someone was hurt or, or something significant happened, that I think people around the state would say, why would you host it when Butler County and the state of Kansas had had this? Why are you doing this? So we had that discussion. And I'll let anybody talk for themselves here, but I would, I want to bring that up because I know the sheriff's busy, he's not here. But I, I think there's concerns on this gravity of an event out there that, on our ability. And it's way out there. So resources, auxiliary resources that may come into play are a long way away. So that's always significant just from our history in public safety that, you know, you have to, if things go bad, you want help quickly and it's going to be difficult at Lake Afton to get help that quickly.
Chief Lannerman, do you got any more you'd like to add to that? I, I would say as he's coming up, I, I think it'd be in good faith to get them an answer relatively quickly, whether we intend to move into a contract or not. Is that through a BOCC action? Is that a staff recommendation? What do you?
I, I think it has to come to the BOCC for a final vote. Whether it gets three votes or not is up to the commission. But I do think we owe the organizer of this an answer quickly.
Correct, yeah. Chief, last thoughts?
I will just add to kind of what Manager Stoles alluded to. That's, that's our, that's our biggest fear and issue with this is not covering the standby because we're used to covering, you know, large events like River Festival, things like that. It's as we have, like you said, 90, 100 degrees. We have multiple patients we transport. We're going to be, we're not transporting with the people that are out there on the standby. Those are dedicated to the standby. So we would have to bring resources out from the city or the western part of, of the county to transport from there all the way into Wichita. If we have multiple patients, that's going to drain resources in any area of the county as far as transport, you know, vehicles. If we get, like you said, 10,000 people with the alcohol, with the water, that, that's our fears, is not taking care of the standby there itself is what it would do to the other areas of the county if we have multiple transports.
And that makes a lot of sense. Last questions or comments on this topic? Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, um, do we, do we have an understanding of their legal liabilities? Have they, do they have, provide some type of insurance policy that they have that covers a, if something happens out there at this event? At their event, is there some type of acknowledgement by the participants that they're?
Sheriff Easter Justin Wyatt, our county counselor, there, there are requirements in the draft agreement. I think very similar to last year's agreement, they would be required to have an insurance policy also, naming Cedric County as an additional insured. I'm trying to see if there's additional things. I believe there's also some indemnification language. It's pretty standard for our contracts. There would be requirements on them to provide some sort of mitigation in that, whether through insurance or indemnification.
You know, I'm not, I'm not a proponent. I don't even drink alcohol, just to let you know. But this is a public space and there are reasonable contracts in place. I don't have, I, I'm indifferent on whether this should or should not happen. As long as they're doing adult things and they have language in place to protect the county and the taxpayers. At the end of the day, people are serving alcohol, you need to be responsible. You know, think about, there's a Bluegrass Festival happens out at Winfield every year. I assume it's very similar. A lot of people show up there and it's famous. You know, people from even across the country come into that and spend money as a, as a economic driver, if you will. We have River Fest. I think people get alcohol at River Fest. And every year we have huge number of people come downtown and alcohol is part of that. I don't, I don't drink alcohol. I'm, I'm not one of the people that actually participates in that and enjoys myself that way in any way. But we would never consider shutting down River Fest. You know, the air, the airshow is another one. There's these, these large events are economic drivers. And again, it's what people, it's one thing that makes Kansas, not necessarily this event, but these types of events. You know, I think Zubal is another one. These types of events makes inequality of life issue for many people who live in Kansas. And I don't want to be necessarily one that says I have an opinion that this should not happen. As long as things are, there's responsible adults, there's contracts in place and we can somehow accommodate a will of the people. I think that's our job is, is not, I'm not going to get involved in whether this should or should not happen, whether it's good or bad. It's not my opinion, doesn't matter. My opinion doesn't matter. I do think if we're going to do it, we ought to make sure that there's reasonableness about it on our side. But every one of these events has large numbers of people that get alcohol and do maybe some stupid things. And people may, may get hurt. And hopefully they won't get hurt. But if that does happen, thankfully, we've got contracts in place that we know who's responsible. And they should be responsible. But just because of my fear of someone getting hurt, doesn't necessarily mean we should tell them we can't do that. Because if that was the case, we wouldn't do one of these. Thank you, Chairman.
Tom, if we could, I, I do think in good faith, we need to get them an answer quickly. If we can maybe get a staff recommendation and to help advise the commission and then maybe get it on the 24th. I think that might be, I, I feel led to try to move as quickly as we can to get them an answer either way. And then we're six, seven months out, so last comments?
And I, I would agree. They're already on their, I was looking at their website and they're already promoting it at Afton. So if it's not going to happen, I think we need to give them as much time possible to figure that out. I agree with Commissioner Howell. I'm not kind of indifferent on this. I mean, I'll see where the staff thinks, what they can reasonably accommodate or not. But at this point, I'm not really either way.
On 24th, thank you, Julie. Great update. Appreciate all the feedback. Next item, Mr. Manager. Sheen and Laura, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, really, our update is we have been working with the election office. They have identified some staffing needs that, for the upcoming presidential preference primary in addition to the general election or the primary and the general election coming up for the rest of the year. And so we have been working with Laura and her staff on what those needs are. They're pretty significant needs, but she would like to be proactive instead of reactive when it comes to staffing. So our offices have been working together. We have total cost for some of these temporary positions that she would like to add. Or I don't know if you want to expand a little bit on that.
I will. And the reason for this is the way our staffing table is now, these positions are set up as temporary or seasonal positions, part-time. And it, it's my understanding, I'm not an HR expert, but it would violate capers or it goes over the 1,000 hours for part-time worker because of this third major election on March 19. And so we are having to, I don't know if you call it reclassify or a lot of these seasonal part-time warehouse positions, seasonal means they can only work six months all continually. It can't be two months here around the March election and then two months around the September election and then two, or August election, and then two months around the November election. It has to be six continual months. You run into the same problem with part-time positions is they're going to go way over 1,000 hours and that violates capers. So we had asked and think, thankful to Anna in your office because she was here. None of us were here in 2020 with the exception of one election office worker. And Anna said the backlog occurred because of registration and voter requests for advanced mail ballots. And that's where the bottleneck occurred. requests for advanced mail ballots. And that's where the bottleneck occurred, and we were not adequately staffed. So we just want to make sure that we have enough staff in place. And I feel like at the suggestion of H R, the way they reclassified these position, it will help us because of this third election here coming up in eight weeks.
So. So the re, the request is for a hundred additional poll workers to be double filled. We have also have a request to combine two temporary positions into a full-time temporary warehouse support position, and then create two temporary full-time positions. And of course, with those being temporary, they will go away December 31st.
But it is going to, I mean, I'm hopeful that, you know, some of the decision packages that you approved for increase in funding for the presidential year, increase in polling sites, you know, from fifteen to thirty, some of the cost was built into those decision packages. Also, some of the election worker coverages or staff will be paid for, for this presidential preference primary, will be reimbursed by the state. So some of those costs will be recovered.
Do you have a, have you been able to establish a fiscal note of what this would look like?
Approximately a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-six.
Okay, questions or comments?
Commissioner Howell? You said some of the costs will be reimbursed. So this number you just gave me is what's not being reimbursed?
Yeah, that would be the total fiscal impact.
So that's to our central taxpayers?
Yes, I, I am not sure.
That is not included, right. The, the election workers for this presidential preference primary, their pay will be reimbursed by the state. So that will go, I assume, back into the general fund when we get that reimbursement.
So on this election, is this similar to other elections in terms of early voting, mail balloting, everything else?
There's a few changes. Voter registration dates, deadlines, that kind of stuff. But yes, we're anticipating, we're going to have the early voting centers open for five days instead of three days. Since we haven't had a primary, a presidential preference primary since ninety-two, we're kind of guestimating on what the voter turnout, I'm thinking higher turnout, because people haven't had this opportunity since ninety-two. So that's why we're increasing early voting sites.
People need to understand, though, this is just picking the nominee for each major party.
Correct.
And, and the only thing on the ballot is this one question.
Correct.
And if you're, whatever party you are, you get to pick between the, the candidates of that party, the mayor that will appear. So the check-in may take time. This is the same process of showing ID and checking somebody in, having signed a form. But the actual vote is going to literally take
Less than a minute.
Well, not use a less than a minute, it should literally take
You can also, voter registration deadline, I believe, is February twentieth. But you can, if you're unaffiliated, on the day of the election, you can affiliate, declare what party you would like to vote for. So, you know, that could take
If you're unaffiliated.
If you're unaffiliated, you can't change parties. But if you're unaffiliated, you can
I would actually say in this particular election, I know this, you may, you may not like this, but I actually think this would be faster. Is hand out a paper ballot only. I mean, the traditional long paper. No, don't check in, no print, no, no inserting the ballot, no printing the ballot, no verify. Just hand them a paper ballot. There's one box, check the box, in the ballot tabulator goes. And that would be countywide. Every single, they only have one or two ballots. There's only two major parties. So if you're one party or the other, you get a, you get the same ballot counting wide. And it literally should take, you hand them, once they've checked in, you hand them a ballot, they check the box, stick it in the tabulator, and out the door they go. So in terms of staff, you don't need as much staff after check-in. My point is, you need a lot more staff on the check-in side. Unless after that, because frankly, the process is extremely short. Second of all, one of the reasons, you know, looking, one of the reasons that I think this is happening, I think there was some concern by one of the major parties, that they did not have enough money to fund the caucus. And so they went to this plan. And what I just, I guess, I don't know if this is a political comment or what, but I don't like the fact that taxpayers are now picking up the cost of this. I don't want any cost to the taxpayers. The state should pay for a hundred percent of this at the state level. I don't want any property taxpayers from Cedric County to pay for a dime of this. Zero dollars from Cedric County. This is a state problem. And I don't know how to get there, but I don't, I don't like the idea of using any dollars to enhance this election. Again, if there are lines, this, this, the penalty of having no caucus. I don't think there should be lines, because it's such a streamlined process after check-in. But if you are involved in any of the caucuses going backwards to nineteen ninety-two, there are, those processes are, you're, you're simply standing with literally thousands of people. The check-in takes a long time. And to, to, to actually do that ballot may take the most of the part of the day. So replacing that process with an idea that we're going to do this in, you know, a very streamlined process in the back to taxpayers, I disagree with it entirely. I know you want more people, but at the end of the day, we don't need as many poll sites on this election. I think the next election, the, the, the primary election that happens in August, and the one in general, in general, in November, those are big problems. Okay, I get that. But this election should be less poll sites, less people. And if there's lines on this one, I don't know if I care as much on this one, because of what we're replacing. Traditionally, since nineteen ninety-two, has been a caucus, and frankly, that process paid for by the parties, not taxpayers. And there, there is no effort necessarily to make it streamlined or fast. It is a long process, takes a quite a long time. And again, it, the parties pay for it. So this one, the state needs to pay for it. We need to live within our budget. Whatever they're going to offer, we should live within our budget from this one. Thank you.
The question on the fiscal note, if you could help, a hundred and seventy thousand, two fifty-six, that is the county contribution. And, and you're, are you saying, I want to make sure I understood it correctly, that some of that cost will be reimbursed by the state, some of that hundred and seventy thou, and do we not know what portion of that cost at this point in time?
Any direct election cost with this presidential preference primary, we can bill back to the state. And that includes election worker pay, that includes the printing of the ballots. I don't have a number of what that might be yet.
Okay.
But the goal, I understand your point, but the goal is to run an efficient election, and that is what I'm challenged with. So.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only concern is that we pass the budget back in August, we should know what we're going to need in August so that we can go to twenty twenty-four. And we knew we were going to have a presidential primary back in August still. This is the sixteenth of January. It was sixteen days into the twenty twenty-four budget. And this is not, this is only one of many things, because we're going to have to come up with a lot of funding for all of our first responders, I think, in the future. That's just my guess, but I, I think it's, if I had a good crystal ball, I'd say, we're probably going to come up with some extra funding for all of our first responders. We're going to come up with some extra funding for people at work shift, or come up with extra funding for a lot of things that aren't in our twenty twenty-four budget that we passed back in August. So the things that we should have known back in August, now we're getting, we're facing some things that we should have known about, so, so that we can include them in our budget. So that's my concern on the coming end of the day, on sixteen days into, to the fiscal year. Because we've got a, we've got another eleven and a half months we've got to get through on this budget. And we have to have enough money at the end of eleven and a half months to do, keep our mission going at the same time. I know Lindsay is a magician on finding money. But I always watch out for the taxpayer also, and make sure that we are spending money very wisely. I want to support the election office, so I want to make sure that you're successful. I, I worry about sixteen days into the year, coming up with a request that we should have known back in August. Thank you.
I assume there's some urgency to this request on the timing. Manager, what are your thoughts on, on that?
It's coming back on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
For commission decision. Is there anything we can get you between now and then? And I don't know, Justin, if you want to talk about the Commissioner Howell's point, the legalities of what we have to and have not do. And I'll be honest with you. I'm trying to understand on the reimbursement model, some of the hundred and seventy-four thousand reimbursed. So is this?
From this first election, the biggest challenge is those part-time positions, they're going to go way over. And those seasonal positions, they're going to go way over the one thousand hours or that six months continual. That's why they need to be reclassified or re-moved from part-time or seasonal to full-time temporary with the expiration at the end of this year. And then, because they're, because they'll violate capers.
Can I, does that prevent us from getting reimbursement if we?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
No.
But does it drive up the cost of the primary and the general then?
The costs are going to be there, yes.
Well, because we're reclassifying, because of
Yes.
This event.
Yeah, and the one full-time, the two part-time combining into one full-time position, most of those costs are in benefits. The, I think it was only three, three to four thousand dollars more to combine those two from a wages standpoint, but the benefit side was twenty-eight, I'd have to pull up my PDF, twenty-eight, was, it was mostly in the benefit side of making it a full-time position, because they would then be eligible for benefits. And again, the decision packages that you approved for the twenty twenty-four budget, some of these costs were built into those that I don't know how that works. I'm not into the finance, but there can be some fund transfers at the end. Hopefully it can be recovered. I don't know. I'm guessing Lindsay, I'm looking at Lindsay.
We, we need to get you, coming back to twenty-fourth, we need to get you a cleaner fiscal note, and we will do that between now and then. I'm, because I'm fuzzy on the fiscal note on this, because if I'm reading this correctly, it's the action of this earlier new event, which is now driving up costs, back to Commissioner Dennis's point, on something that we should have projected, that I don't know back then that we could have projected, that now drives up primary and general costs that we had not anticipated. And then I'm going to need a clean fiscal note, because as Commissioners brought up, we have, we're sixteen days into a new year. I, I want to clean the fiscal note on a, on this and get it to you.
Easter.
Yeah. Before next.
And just to be clear, when you use the word primary, we have to, we actually have to add the word presidential primary or August primary, because there is now a common word for two different election cycles.
Right.
Second of all, just want to make sure we're clear here. This hundred and seventy thousand dollar estimate, or whatever, a quarter million dollar estimate, what, you said two numbers. That's a consequence of the presidential primary that we're going to incur in the, in the August and November elections. The higher cost in August or November, because we have to reclassify people in this election. So thi, this, again, I, I think you're telling me one hundred percent of the cost of the presidential primary, minus the impact that happens later in the year. But this cost of this primary is one hundred percent borne by the state.
We cannot deduct full-time staff wages, like my staff that are currently in the office right now on this day. Their salary and wages are not deductible for this presidential preference primary. But temporary staff, election worker pay, ballot printing, all of that is deductible and can be charged back to the state.
Al, also, in this election cycle, you have, again, I know people can affiliate on election day. But there's an awful lot of people who, again, don't vote and are unaffiliated and are not going to affiliate. Okay? So this is an election for Republicans and Democrats specifically, which is a fairly small number compared to the total population.
Two hundred and twenty thousand of our three hundred and thirty are affiliated with a party.
Okay.
We have a hundred and ten unaffiliated voters, a hundred and ten thousand.
And of those, what's the, what's the typical? Well, again, I don't know if we even know that.
Yeah.
But, oh.
Haven't had one since.
I can tell you from, from my experience, the, the caucus is unusually low compared to the hundred, you know, compared to the two hundred and twenty thousand. And typically speaking, the majority party that's, if it's a reelection of the president, typically they don't, they don't have a caucus typically. It's only when there's open seat typically that you'll see a caucus. And so one party or the other may have a caucus and the other one may not. That happens. There's presumptions, or presumption, the presumptive nominee for majority parties going in for reelection. So again, I, because we're doing presidential primary in Kansas, I know that there will be a, there will be a a ballot on both sides. Both, both major parties will have a ballot. But if it wasn't for the presidential primary done by the government, I don't think that the Democrat Party would have a caucus this year. Because there is a, there is a presumption that President Biden would be the nominee for the Democrat Party. So they wouldn't have a caucus this year. And other states, other states that don't have presidential primaries, I don't think they're caucusing. I'll just say that. So on the Republican side, there may be numerous candidates, and I think you'll see more interest on the Republican side. But in terms of the turnout, let's say there's a hundred and fifty thousand Republicans in Central County that are registered to vote. I would be very surprised if you'd see even a fifty percent turnout. So again, and we ought to, just a thought, i- is there any chance that you guys would actually try to figure out timing of how long it is going to take for someone to vote on a single item like this? Because we've never done this before. Every ballot is the same, only one question on the ballot. Timing is going to be much less. Do we, are we sure we need this many people to make this happen?
But you still have to put them on machines. You still have to show them how the machine operates, because they forget.
And again, I
I know you're advocating for paper ballots, but there's a cost to that if we went all paper. Much higher cost if we went to all paper for the printing of those ballots. So.
I'll, I'll continue thinking about this, but I, I, I don't think we ought to have a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar higher cost to the taxpayers because of this in November and, and, and August. I think we need to find a way not to have that happen. I'll just say that. Thank you again.
Yeah, Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you. So these people, if all this goes as you're asking, will be full-time temporary until the end of this year. And what happens next year? Are they back, just back to normal what it was?
They go back to part-time positions. Those four part-time positions are put on hold for this year.
Okay.
So those temporary full-time would expire, and we go back to what, because right now, we hire seasonal warehouse workers that come in about six weeks prior to the election to start preparing our machines and do the logic and accuracy testing. And then they work two to three weeks after the election. So it's about a ten-week period where they work surrounding each election. We have, we also have two special elections that are going to occur in May. So it's a very busy election year, and they will go way over that one thousand hours. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the update. Manager Stoles, you have an idea what you need to get to us at the end of this week, early next week?
Yep.
Any other items?
Oh, ready for the next?
Ready for the next item, yeah.
I thought you were talking to your Commissioners. We do have a quick presentation from the Appraiser's Office on their online appeals, Mark.
Hello, Mark.
Hello, Commissioners. How are you? Good morning. Mark Clark, County Appraiser. Our office is continuously looking to improve our appeals process, and so I have tasked Ronnie, our chief deputy, in securing the appropriate software that assists us in making the appeal process more efficient while doing three things. Eliminating detrimental impacts to the county email system for property owners emailing their documentation. If you've ever had a slow email system, or it's crashed during the appeal season, I'm probably the guilty one. Streamlining documentation handling within the office, we wind up with over a million sheets during an appeal season. So we want to make sure that we've got that handled properly, and streamlining the appeal request process. Ronnie has vetted the software. He's done a very good job of implementing a solution and training staff. There is something to, to know about this software, is that it is configured currently for the appeal process. However, it can be configured for many different processes within the Appraiser's Office, while at the same time, other departments can use this through security and configuration as well. So it is a very interesting piece of software. Once again, it can be configured for various things within our office. And something that I am looking forward to in the near future will be, once again, having personal property rendering online. We used to have that. It came to end of life for that piece of software. And it was going to take I T S between nine hundred and a thousand hours to man-hours to fix that. So we've decided that this would be a better solution. Now I'm going to let Ronnie demonstrate the software, and thank you for your time.
I try and do this kind of standing here, because technology issues and stuff. Currently out on our main website is a appeals page, very similar to this. Of course, this is the testing environment for accounting website. But on there, you'll see that there's a link there. Got to be able to also use the keyboard and mouse. It doesn't reach, I got told. It doesn't reach, I got told.
The hard bar, can that thing go all the way back? Looks like there's enough.
And, but I just tried, yeah. We're gonna try this, so like I was saying, this is the test environment, but our production. Actual county websites, appeals page looks exactly like this. Under appeal documentation, you see there's multiple options to submit documentation. Um, if you click the online smart file, online portal. It will actually take you here. Every person will have to create an account with their email address by clicking the new user, create an account. I won't have Nicole actually do that, I'll log in here in a minute. But you'll create an account, you'll create a password, it will then send you an email, you have to verify your email is accurate. And then you can actually log in and actually either submit it or quest or submit your documentation. So, um, everything is email based, it does not tie you to a particular record, you can use any record you want. But you do have to create an account and email. So there are gonna be, um. From the time period of March first through March thirty first, there will be the two options. Outside of that timeframe, there'll be one option, which is the submit additional documentation for an informal equalization or payment under protest. Um, basically, it'll ask you to begin file. We're gonna go with QuickRef R nine two nine nine three. And I need you to click the one that has the date of twenty twenty two, so the bottom one. It'll then ask you for your appeal passcode. On this document here, this is our appeal confirmation letter that every property owner receives within ten days of their appeal notification. At the bottom, it has their appeal passcode. So the appeal passcode for this QuickRef is two zero three. Five eight eight two four, no, not not. Two zero three five eight eight two four. So then I just gonna pull up this screen here and it basically gives you some basic information of what the case number is, which will correspond to the case number on the letter. The date you filed, the date of your appeal, the owner's name and address. And then it gives the opportunity for the property owner to submit any type of verbiage or notes they wanna make about the documentation they're submitting. So we'll go ahead and hit next. And here, this is where you actually be able to submit your documentation by selecting files and browsing to where they're at. There is a limit of twenty five attachments that you're allowed to submit, and the file sizes have to be less than ten megabytes per file. And of course, there are file types that the system does not allow, like, uh, movie PDF. It'll accept, it will not accept an XML, it will not accept the movies, it will not accept, um. TIFF format pictures, but JPGs, BMPs, it will accept. Um, one of the reasons why TIFF formats does not work is because they're usually so large. But, um, so you would, um, go ahead and hit next. Then you'd have to, uh, basically type your name and the date in here that you submitted it, you submit it. And it would then auto populate into our Kama system to where no one has to touch it. We don't have to worry about retrieving it through the mail and scanning it in, or getting it in email and having to attach it to the appeal. It automatically attaches the appeal for the appraiser to review during your appeal. And you submit. Yes. And you'll notice at the top, it gave you a little message center. And there's the bold one there, it'll actually give you an email that says that you submitted documentation for that QuickRef and we've received it. And it'll actually correspond back to you, in fact, I just got the email in my account that we submitted a request. So, um, that's how to upload additional, that's how to upload a documentation for your appeal. So Nicole, if you can hit available filings, please. And then we're gonna do an informal equalization appeal. This is how you'd actually request, just you request your appeal for the spring, um, appeals. From the value notice, um, one of the things we also wanted to show you was the value notice for twenty twenty four is changing. Um, these will be coming out of the Kama system instead of the tax system this year. This is a completely customizable form, so. If we need to make changes, it doesn't cost us anything but someone going in and changing the format. Um, we've asked for changes on the CBN out of the tax system and have received very large cost estimates. And basically left the value notice alone, because we didn't wanna pay those costs. So, um, your PIN number will be zero zero three four five eight nine two. Yes, this is actually my account. Um, but I'm showing you this for a reason, and the appeal passcode is two zero seven Charlie Echo, all caps. Four two four. It's gonna tell you that I already have an appeal on file, so it will not let me submit another appeal. For the same tax year, because you're only allowed to have one appeal per tax year. So there is some logic built into it, Nicole, if you can hit cancel filing, please. Informal equalization appeal. And then now your, um, number is zero zero. One one zero two one zero. And your PIN number is two zero. Or A's all cap. Two four. And this basically gives you a terms and conditions and basically says that we do not accept incomplete. E filings and that we do not own this software and cannot guarantee its availability, so we'll hit next. Then, under owner appellate, you have the little three hash marks on the right side. Up under owner appellate, basically says that, are you the owner or are you appealing it for somebody else? Um, part of the reasons, can you put that box back up, please? Part of the reason for the not listed is we are required to keep our records pristine as of one one of the tax year. So if you bought the property March or January sixteenth. You have the right to appeal the property, even though you're not the listed owner in our Kama system, so that would be why you're doing not listed. Put your information in and you could then get your appeal, we'll go ahead and click, uh, Mr. Fisher, please. And then it'll ask you if the mailing address is correct, if yes or no, this summer we're gonna say yes, but if you hit no, it'll give you additional options to fill in your correct address. You have to give a valid email address, you have to give a valid phone number. Three one six 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 zero nine thousand. You can put a secondary phone number if you want, if you wish to be, um, represented during your appeal, you can check the box, which will then. Require you to fill out additional information. And the blue hyperlink there is the declaration of representative form that has to be filled out and returned. At the time of your filing, or at least before your appeal. If the form's not turned in, we have to invalidate the appeal and send you a red letter saying that you never submitted that form and your appeal's not valid. You wanna uncheck the box, please, and then we wanna know if you have any pending cases before BOTA. And then there's the type of appearance, this year our appeals will be done by phone call. But we had them initially configure it to go ahead and do all three options in case we ever get to a point where we do allow. Permanent walk-ins. Or, um, we're exploring an option that other counties are doing, which are what they call evidentiary appeals. You submit your documentation, we review it, we render a decision, you either accept it or you go to the next level, small claims or BOTA. Other counties are doing it, um, we're right now talking with the county councillor's office. They've come up with some concerns that they've got with it, but we're gonna put together a team later this summer to try to get those ironed out for twenty twenty five. So, but it next. And it gives you a list of reasons why you're appealing, um, the reasons are actually match the back of the value notice that everyone is usually always checked. Um, we'll go ahead and hit option number one and eight, please. And then here it gives you the, uh, property owner basically an option to tell us what they feel their value is worth. If you were to check option four, it would ask you again and make it required. But you're not gonna click to option four, so we'll hit it next. So property characteristics are incorrect, we have some base information for the very first residential building that is listed. If there is a multi dwelling parcel, this will only be the information for the first one. Property owner has the right to check the box that tells us they disagree with it for us, for the appraiser to know what they're already concerned about. Before they even get into their appeal. So. And then, of course, other, they can put whatever comments they want about why they're making their appeal, hit next, please. They have the same option to upload any additional documentation they want, like repair estimates, pictures. You know, any options they want, we'll hit next. They will then have to, of course, sign this saying that, you know, because we have to have a valid appeal, they'll have to date it and they'll submit it. This will then go into a queue, ours, and you'll see there's another message center that says that our, your, our request has been received. This, like I said, goes into a queue, once our staff goes through validates that the appeal request is valid. All the documentation is in order, they will approve it. And then it automatically goes into our Kama system, everything gets attached, we can schedule it, we send them out the confirmation letter, we conduct their appeal. We can return it to the property owner because they missed their declaration of representative form, we need that back, we'll return it to them, say, hey, this is missing. They can attach it, we will then approve it, it'll be, and they'll get an email saying that we've returned it. They can upload that doc, that that declaration of representative. Then we can turn around and they'll get another email once we've approved it, or we can reject it because they sent us in a paper one. A couple of days ago, they haven't heard nothing, so then they went online and filed, but. The paper one got entered today. And they entered a new one today, we'll say, no, we've got your appeal on file already that that was received in the mail, so we're rejecting your online appeal. But those are the, those are, all the communications through email, this is completely communicative, so. Just wanted you to see kind of what the new options are for submitting documentation and requesting appeal, this does no way. Change anyone's current rights, they can continue to file by paper, they can continue to file by email. We've accepted this, this is just another option for them to request and upload documentation to us.
Well, good presentation, Ronnie, seems to be quite a system, are any questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Minser.
Ronnie, thanks for the presentation, um, you said this appraisal notice is new and customizable?
Yes.
Is it customizable where we could put the state of Kansas seal up here and that you're on behalf of the state of Kansas?
The.
It's a good question.
It's a good question, and there's actually guidelines that PVD has issued that we have to follow, and it has to be the county information and county logo.
Good try.
No, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Dennis, did you have a question?
I appreciate you have still filed with paper or PDF electronically, only question.
We have never. Done it in different languages, um, not saying we couldn't, but, um, our value notice is also published to the website. So, um, we'd have to find a way of publishing multiple versions of the same document. To the website and our current website's also predominantly in English unless you translate it, so. Um, I don't, not saying it couldn't be done, I'm just, it's nothing we've done in the past or have thought about.
I just go back to a couple of years ago, a lot of the commissioning on the mission at that time, but that we had a sheriff sale because people. Both Vietnamese and they threw away all their documents because they couldn't understand them, so they just didn't do anything. And the house sold the sheriff's sale, and at that point in time, I, they go, oh, well, we were paid, we just couldn't read it. And, but we had to stop the sheriff sale, it was a big deal, that's a while. And so I, I don't want something like that to happen because somebody for the protest. We've, we've gotta be, I'm concerned with the fact, we got a lot of people who wants to speak English.
I agree with that, that is something that we haven't done in the past, however, if somebody has appealed. And we know that they're having difficulty, we have asked ahead of schedule to have a translator. Um, uh, same with people that are hard of hearing, uh, or or other. Uh, types of disabilities, um, but nonetheless, um, that is something we can look at. We'll just have to think.
It's something we, it's something we can work on, but at the same time, I'm kinda sorry to say, but I'm gonna throw one of the electeds under the bus, but. You know, tax bills would also need to be modified, our and our letter would have to be modified from multiple languages and that. It's just, it's a larger, I think, undertaking than just translating.
We'll have to think about that and 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 see what we can do.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ha.
Thank you, Chairman, I I do think that, uh, one step at a time, this is a good step in that direction of getting, um, you know, another tool out there for our taxpayers. And again, if you need this other languages, that might be a, a, a ongoing discussion, I think that's a good, good discussion to have, but. Uh, one step at a time at least, so this is certainly a step in that right direction, but. Um, so if someone goes through this process, there may be determination made by your staff. That's done only digitally, they've got to log back in to see that, there, there will not necessarily be a phone call.
No, 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 this, this option here is for them to request the appeal.
Okay.
Or either, and right now, we're doing all of our appeals by phone.
So they, if they go through this process of filing their appeal.
They're gonna file.
They will still have a discussion with someone on your.
Yes.
That's what I was, that's what, that's what I wanted to hear.
They're gonna request an appeal either by paper or through this process.
And if they do have.
Get the confirmation letter that tells us, that tells you that they're, we're gonna call at whatever date and time, we're still gonna call, conduct our appeal as normal. They'll get the result letter and, I mean, the process doesn't change, this is just an option to.
They don't have to do this, bro. I think that's, uh, great to know, thank you so much.
You're good. Uh, I appreciate the update on this, Mr. Clark, I got one question and it's off topic, sorry, tax valuations, the notices go out in March, correct?
They will be mailed at the end of February, so people should have them in their mailbox around March one.
When do you give an idea to our department, our finance department as to what your estimation of valuation will look like to the county?
I don't give them an estimate of, of evaluation, I'll give them, uh, a percentage that I say that that, uh, it will not go below.
Okay, and that is, when do you do that?
We already have.
So Commissioner, we will roll, or Chairman, excuse me, getting used to it, uh, we will roll that out to you at your, uh, retreat in February.
Okay, good, that, that, that's the timeline, I was trying to get an idea where we're at, very good to understand.
I just didn't wanna overstep.
No, 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 no. And that's helpful information, thank you.
But Mark, you do give an update to Commissioners about trends that you're seeing, right, a new million in February sometime.
Yes.
Okay.
Before I, before I make, before I make the annual presentation, I'll go see them one on one.
A lot of curious constituents, so. I just see the update, okay, uh, Mr. Manager, any other items today? Okay, I made mention that our county treasurer, Randy Bailey's here and our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, we're here, messaged with them. No business to come before us today, they're good to go, so outside of that, we'll see everybody tomorrow morning, nine AM, thank you.